The site sits on a 7,252 square foot corner lot, Zoned Single Family Residential identified in the general plan as low-density residential. The corner lot contains a single-family, single-story residence with a single-car-attached garage. I'd like to go through a little bit of background of this project. The plans were submitted on February 14th of 2018. And at the time, the neighbors located in the condominiums on Vallejo Court expressed concerns about the impact to bay views from the proposed project site. The applicant distributed the neighbor consultation forms and the description of the plans, the site plan. And based on the feedback that they received from the neighbors on Vallejo Court, to address those concerns, they revised their plan design from a pitched roof, designed to a flat roof, and submitted the plans on July 2nd, 2018 for staff review. In addition to the revised plans, staff requested that the applicant install story poles to provide greater perspective on the mass and height of the proposed two-story flat roof design. The story poles were installed on October 24th, 2018. The existing residence is a single-story, single-family house with a two-car garage. I believe I mentioned at the beginning, this was a two-car garage, not a single-car garage. The entry has an entry of three bedrooms with closets, one bathroom, one master bedroom with bathroom, and two closets. A family room with fireplace, dining room, kitchen, and living room. The existing roof is composite shingle with a 412 roof pitch slope and exterior combination of stucco and painted wood siding. The existing front yard contains a concrete driveway with a brick bordered walkway and two-foot shrubbery and rock landscaping bordered by bricks. There are three small trees, two on either side of the garage, and one located at the corner of the house. There are fortified-foot bushes screening the side yard fence and house on the Conejo Drive side of the yard of the property and the grass lawn adjacent to the sidewalk. The proposed project would demolish the existing single-story home and construct a new two-story home with a flat roof design. The first story includes a two-car garage, covered entry vestibule, and hallway, a recreation room next to the half bathroom, kitchen, dining room, stairway to the second floor, and a master bedroom with bathroom and closet. There would be an uncovered rear backyard patio with access from the kitchen and living rooms. The front yard includes installation of permeable, interlocking paver driveway and walkway to the entrance of the house. The front landscaping will include drought-tolerant native plant species. The front driveway will have space for an additional single car conforming to the residential parking guidelines of three car spaces for residents with a greater than 3,000 square foot but less than 4,000 square feet of livable space. Based on the revised plans received on July 2nd, 2018, staff received 16 certified mail receipts sent out by the applicant, and 17 consultation forms were received in support of the project. There were 11 letters and photos received opposed to the project, all from residents located on the condominiums on Vallejo Court above the project site. I'd like to go through a little bit about the project data for the project site. On the second column, on the first column, we have the requirements for this location, the development standards, then the existing information, then the proposed plans from the February 14th submittal, and the proposed revised plans that were submitted July 2nd, 2018 plans, which are here before the commission this evening. The maximum building height allowed for this site is 30 feet. The existing height is 19 feet, 9 inches. The originally proposed height for this location was 28 feet, for this project, was 28 feet, 6 and 1/2 inches. Based on the extensive feedback and outreach that the applicant conducted, you know, and trying to address the concerns of impacts to views, the applicant reduced the design of the building to a flat roof and reduced it to a height of 21 feet, 8 inches. So it would be moving from 19 feet, 9 inches, to 21 feet, 8 inches, which is a height increase of 23 inches from the existing roof height. This is the existing site plan, the building footprint of the corner lot. This is the proposed site plan, first floor. It closely mirrors the existing footprint. If you can see from the existing, this is the proposed. It's roughly in the same location but has extensive improvement, has an uncovered patio and extensive improvements to the driveway and the landscaping, which I will be showing later, a plan of the landscaping. This is the proposed site plan for the second floor, showing the family room and three bedrooms and the two bathrooms and the stairway. And there's also an office room. This is the landscaping plan, indicating the plants and trees, native species, and then the permeable surface for the driveway and the walkway to the entrance of the home. These are the existing and proposed elevations. This is the existing front elevation, again, showing the height of 19 feet right here. And then this was the originally submitted plans with a pitched roof that had the building up approximately 28 feet. And then, based on the feedback received from the neighbors, the applicant and the property owner redesigned the home to a flat roof, contemporary flat roof design, which is shown here. These are the north elevations, again, showing the existing, the original proposal, and then the new proposal, which includes a flat roof. The dashed outline here is shown just to, as a comparison to what was originally proposed. This slide gives an idea of the story pole evaluation that was done. This is the actual project site location, and then sort of view paths toward the project from the different condominium units. This is a map, site plan view, and then this is an aerial photo of the location. And this is a section that shows the proposed, outline of the proposed flat roof design building, and then the outline of the original design, which was reduced to have the flat roof. From the second floor of the condominium units, there would be no impact at all to the views. There would still be a continuous view east to the bay. From the first floor, there's a slight impact to the view, and it's easier seen in some photos that are coming up here. So this is the staff site visit story pole photos. These are the story poles, and then there's, it's difficult to see in this, these photos, but there's some orange flashing along the top, and that indicates the ridge, the top of the roof. So these are views looking southeast. This is a view looking northeast. This is the view looking from the grade, the existing grade across the street from Vallejo Drive. You'll note that this is the roof line here. And this is another view looking east, and this is the roof line. So the, the, the impact to the view is very minimal based on the plan designs and the photos of the story pole. This is a rendering of the building to provide sort of perspective of what the home would look like. And before the commission, these are the required findings that is required to approve this project, that the architectural landscaping and general appearance of the building is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, that the project complies with all applicable development regulations, which it does. The project will not cause a significant visual impact to neighboring views from the principal rooms of a residence. And based on the evaluation of the plans and the story poles, staff believes that it does not cause a significant visual impact. And last, the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious, and safe development of the city and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood in which the building or structures erected. Staff is recommending that the planning commission review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for design review permit to allow the construction of a new two-story residence located in the single-family residence R1 zoning district at 210 Vallejo Drive, subject to the attached conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation. The applicant and property owner are here also to present and answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff right now? Yes, okay.
Just a quick, two. One is from across the street, more toward the highway. Do you, do we know what the elevation difference is between the grade of this house versus the properties in back on Vallejo Court?
It's approximately between 20 and 25 feet. I believe that's outlined in the staff report.
Staff report says 30 feet.
Okay, yeah.
30 feet?
Yeah, the staff report, 30 feet, yeah. And that's an approximate estimate based on the San Mateo County Assessor Elevation Topographic Map. So that's where that number comes from.
Okay, thank you. And my other is regarding the neighbor consultation forms.
Yes.
I'm not understanding this because there are a bunch of forms from people in support who aren't even in, who their property address that they wrote in there is not even in the neighborhood. So I, I mean, that's a little confusing to me. So what is the reason?
Yes, well, the, the, the ones that came in, those were letters that were received based on the second design, so on the, on the design that's before you, the flat roof. And these were submitted in support of the project. Normally, we have those, those are distributed to adjacent neighbors to indicate whether they support or are not in support of the project. But there's, the other residents are perfectly welcome to submit forms or submit letters in support of the project. So staff receive these and include them as part of the packet. The, there was also letters and lots of photos from the condominium owners, and most of them, they responded with, with letters and photos and not the consultation form. So that, that is our guideline, that it's, you know, the adjacent property owner that submits the forms. But we do accept letters and additional forms from other neighbors if they do support the project.
Okay. I have a little bit of a concern about that, but I will, I'll, I mean, because it's a neighbor consultation form, and so it, it tends to skew it a bit in the sense of showing more support than might be there in terms of the neighbors themselves. But I will, I just wanted to note that. So the people who are on here are not property owners in the area. They're just residents in Millbrae.
There are some that aren't property owners, but there are quite a few that are nearby. So like 206 Vallejo Drive, 300 Vallejo Drive, and the location, 165 Conejo Drive. So Conejo Drive, Vallejo Drive are nearby.
I just, it was just odd to me because we've never seen that before. Usually, we'll have, neighbor consultation forms will be the neighbors of the property
Right.
itself. And so it kind of threw me off initially. So I was thinking, oh, is it the property owners of some of the condos that live somewhere else maybe? And that got confusing, and I think that, and again...
For future staff can note that these are like letters of support.
That might be better, I think, because here, then it just, I mean, it looks like 17 neighbors are in support, 11 are in opposition. And so then it, whereas, I know there are some support among the neighbors there, but, you know, you know, the first one that came up was Clearfield, and I was like, where's Clearfield? Clearfield is not anywhere close to that. So I just wanted to note that, and I think that might be a better way to go.
Thank you.
That's all I have for now.
Anybody else right now, for Sam? Okay. The applicant like to come up?
All right. So you can just go.
Just that one page.
Just that one page?
I mean, no, no, get just the, I don't want to see all that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And could you, Sam? Distribute that to the commissioners.
Oh, okay.
Good evening. My name is Tora Nor, project architect. I'd like to introduce my client, Kevin and Elaine Chan, first.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Good evening, plenty of commissioners. My name's Kevin Chan. His wife, Erin Chan. We've been living in Millbrae over 20 years. So we like Millbrae. There by the airport, there by the bus station, and a nice neighborhood. So we're going to stay here forever. So we built this house for my entire home. So we're going to stay here forever, for the rest of our life. Thank you.
Thank you. Oops. Hey, Sam? Could you get this back for me? I'm sorry. Commissioners, thank you for hearing us tonight. I would like to just clarify one thing that I think Commissioner John talked about in terms of neighborhood support. There is one unit, Unit 3, which is in the middle, that actually has one property owner, but they submitted four consultation forms. So it's basically a rental unit. So the house is, we've gone to a, a flat roof to accommodate the neighbors. We really took to heart that there was a lot of opposition about the height, even though we're within the 30-foot height ceiling or maximum height limit. So by dropping the roof, we dropped it down almost seven feet. And if you notice, on the front, on the second floor, I eliminated any windows that face that west side. So basically, the project will have no light pollution at night to the, to the neighbors, to the west of us. I have no problem with this. Sam, sorry. Let's see. There's another way to show this. Oh, here, there's a, there. There. It's just up and down?
Yeah.
Okay. I think Sam did a great job of explaining how we went through the process of going from the pitched roof, would add, you know, at 27 feet, down to a flat roof. And actually, this whole process, from a design standpoint, put a lot of time and money into our project. The original design was a design that my client loved, and then when I came back to him, with the idea that we really had to listen to our neighbors, and what could we do to lessen the impact of a view? And I suggested to Kevin that we need to go to a flat roof, and a little more of a contemporary-style house, which he embraced, and so we really felt great about that. There's five units that are behind us. There's Unit Number 1, which is to the north, going Unit 2, 3, 4, and 5. Unit 3 was one of the required units that we had to notice, and they came back with an opposition to the project. Unit 1 is approximately 310 feet away from our project. Unit 2 is about 200, about 150 feet. Unit 3, about 140. Unit 4, 210. And Unit 5 is 340 feet. Those are significant numbers in terms of distance from our project to their project. Sam did a good job of explaining the height difference. Now, one of the things that I noticed when I looked at the photographs that were presented to us from the neighbors, and what they were showing was really more like a telephoto lens of our project and not a whole view. So if you look at the top slide, basically, that's the view from their view area. Our project, as you see, project site way over on the left, that's 340 feet away and 30 feet lower. Unit 4 is about maybe 180 feet away, and there's absolutely no impact of view. The views that you see are views that might be on Unit 5 would be San Bruno Mountain. Unit 4, maybe just a smidgen of the airport. Unit 3, which is directly behind us, really has no impact of any bay views and a little bit of view impact of the airport, but it's mostly at the airport support buildings, not actually runway. Unit 2 has also this very insignificant amount of impact to view. And Unit 1, here again, is over 300 feet away, looking to the south, and very little impact to view, if any. This is just a composite of a line drawing that shows the new house and the existing. One of the things that you should keep in mind is that we're actually removing a great deal portion of the roof to the sides because it's basically a gable roof, and we're basically cutting that gable portion out to meet the second-story setbacks. And here again, just some, some perspectives of the existing house. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them for you.
Any questions for him right now?
I'm sorry, you mentioned at the beginning that the west side elevation, you had removed windows? You said something about that.
Well, the second story...
Can you show that again?
If you look at this perspective, and that orange front door sits in front of the second-story wall, to the right and left of that front door are two bedrooms. What I did is I positioned the windows for those bedrooms on the north and south elevation so there's no windows off those bedrooms that face the neighbors. I was a fellow planning commissioner for the city of San Mateo for eight years, and one of the things we talked about was light pollution. And while it's not a concern, I don't think in Millbrae, I think that the neighbors would appreciate that at night, looking down onto our property, you're not going to see windows that are lit up. So basically, at night, that second story is going to basically become, you know, transparent. That answer your question?
I think, so to the right of that door, there are two windows there? There are two windows, or there are not?
Talking about the second story.
Are you talking about the second, okay. That's why, because you said front elevation, and then I got kind of lost, so...
That little window above the door...
Right.
Is in a bathroom.
Okay. That's what, I just wanted to kind of solidify what it was that we're talking about. Okay. And that wasn't based on any requests from anyone? It was just your...
It was a design element that I felt was added to the project.
And then I'd just like to, if, I was going to call the commission's attention to sheet. I think it's A30 on the plans that show you the first and second floor floor plan. You can see where they're, what Mr...
Nor.
Nor, thank you, is speaking about where there's no windows on that front elevation of drawing number 2, which is on the left-hand side. Yeah.
So basically, in conclusion, I'd just like to say that, you know, I think we really went above and beyond what may be required. We lowered the finished floor on the front by a foot so that, basically, we went from a 10-foot ceiling to a 9-foot ceiling. The second floor has 9-foot ceilings. So that helped contribute to lowering that whole overall height of the house. I don't think there's much more that we could have done to really kind of bring the house down while still keeping within our allowable second-story construction rights.
A few questions. So the views that you showed from Vallejo Court, from the different units, what elevation were those taken from? Was that from the deck view, or...
That was from, basically, the deck. That was at an elevation of 35 feet from what'd be our finished floor.
Okay. Did you go on to the deck to take those shots? Did you?
No.
Okay. And I noticed that the flat roof design, it matches the neighborhoods with the homes to the south on Vallejo Drive. However, I noticed that those homes on, to the south, they don't have the second-story setbacks, the 10-foot side setbacks, so forth. Question for staff, is there any familiarity with those houses to the south and why there's no setback, but there's setbacks required for this house?
Staff can research that, but typically, those homes, if they were built before 2009, they weren't subject to those second-floor setback requirements. So, and I believe those homes have been there for, before, they've been there way before 2009. So they were, were built when second-floor setbacks were not required at the time.
So I can see that with this design, with the setback requirements, it's less massive than the homes to the south that have complete, with no setbacks, such as square block, that might be even more obstructing. Can you just mention how you tried to match the existing neighborhoods with the flat roof design to the homes on the south?
As an architect, we try to be creative. And designing a flat roof really poses some challenges. What I did is I extended the roof beyond the exterior walls to provide passive solar heat. So we're getting shade off those roofs, the cantilever beyond the wall. And those cantilevers also provide shadows. And when you look at a building massing, shadows provide articulation within the mass. And so by having articulation, it actually adds interest to the project and, and also, I think, some integrity to the project. So we're not just building a box, but we're designing an element that, you know, I felt very strongly from a design standpoint. And we're not trying to copy those three units that are to the south of our project.
And then also, with the many concessions that appear to be made from the first design to the redesign, were there more discussions or meetings with the neighbors on Vallejo Courts? And was there anything else that they asked for that you considered or...
Well, we, working with staff, basically, because we got, received, typically, on the neighborhood consultation, there was just four neighbors that we were required to notice in the beginning. And when the, and then after that submittal came in, and actually, Sam had prepared an approval letter of our project meeting all the requirements, he said, hey, you know, we got a little bit of a problem. All these neighbors are going to kind of object to the, you know, the height and design of the second story. I think you need to go back and redesign it. So in doing that, we'd now had a list of all the neighbors behind us. So I sent out by certified letter, a copy of all the plans and the information, and that's how that transported. I never got, I think I got one letter directly mailed to my office in opposition, but it didn't really say what they're exactly opposed. There was no one that I know of that opposed to the style of the house, but it was more that we were blocking their view. I think it's basically a view issue for them. And honestly, I think we've, there isn't a view issue.
That's it for now.
I've got a couple of questions for the applicant, if you don't mind. The first thing is, in reviewing your plan, I'm looking at A11 dot 1, which shows sort of an elevation differences in relative to Unit 3 versus 210 Vallejo. What I wanted to know is...
And when the, all, and then after that submittal came in, and actually Sam had prepared an approval letter of our project meeting all the requirements, he said, hey, you know, we got a little bit of a problem. All these neighbors are going to kind of object to the, you know, the height and design of the second story. I think you need to go back and redesign it. So in doing that, we'd now had a list of all the neighbors behind us. So I sent out my certified letter, a copy of all the plans and the information, and that's how that transported. I never got, I think I got one letter directly mailed to my office in opposition, but it didn't really say what they're exactly opposed. There was no one that I know of that opposed to the style of the house, but it was more that we were blocking their view. I think it's basically a view issue for them. And honestly, I think we've, there isn't a view issue.
That's it for now.
I've got a couple of questions for the applicant, if you don't mind. The first thing is, in reviewing your plan, I'm looking at A11 dot one, which shows sort of an elevation differences in relative to unit three versus 210 Vallejo. What I wanted to know is, what is the ground difference in terms of elevation between Vallejo Court and Vallejo Drive?
It's approximately, and I don't have that exact number, but it's right around probably 22 to 25 feet.
Because when I'm looking at your 11 dot one, if it was drawn according to scale, it's a 1/8 scale, looks like.
It's to scale.
It's to scale.
Right.
Okay, so I measured it around 21, approximately.
That's probably pretty close.
Okay, very well. So, and the proposed building height is 21 feet and change?
Correct.
Okay, so that's question-
It's about, it's approximately roughly two feet higher than the existing ridge line of the existing house.
Right, I think the staff mentioned 23 inches higher than the current building height. So that's question number one. Number two, in relations to Vallejo Drive 300, 304, and 308, they're all sort of a boxy, mid-modern century, flat roof design. How are these buildings, in terms of building heights, relative to the elevation of the street?
I think they're a little bit, there's a grade change through Vallejo Drive there. And that actually raises up slightly-
Right.
-as you go south. And while their building footprint is recessed, their first floor is not at grade or at the height of the sidewalk, it's, you step down a few steps to get to their first floor. But relative to our height, it's very close. I didn't get out and actually physically measure it, I didn't have that transit to do that. But visually, when you look at it, it's not, oh my God, it's, you know, four feet lower or four feet higher, they just seem to be, you know, complement.
I see, okay.
I was actually out there taking some GPS shots of the neighborhood and have some elevations, but unfortunately this app, I don't want to name the app, but unfortunately it doesn't make sense, so.
I will say that the tool that I used to gather our data was a very sophisticated GPS drone system. And our GPS drone systems can record within a tenth of a foot. And so I recorded our heights, our distances, and that's, wasn't just pie in the sky, it was numbers that we feel very comfortable in presenting to you.
Fair enough, thank you.
Anything else for him right now?
I just have a question of, I get, I'm not sure if the architect can answer the applicant, but, I mean, the owners, but I was just wondering, in the original, in the existing floor, first floor, there were three bedrooms, I believe, the two, sorry. In any case, right now, the proposed is to have a master suite at the downstairs and then a recreation room, and all the other bedrooms are upstairs. So is there, can you give a little more clarity in terms of why that, or what the rush, what their hope is?
This is going to be the retirement home. So putting the master bedroom on the first floor makes sense. The recreation room is like a media room, it's an entertainment room. They have two grown children, they'll come and stay with them, they'll be upstairs in the bedroom upstairs. There's a small family room that has a view out to the bay, and then Kevin will have an office upstairs. I should also point out that we tried to really stay within the existing footprint of what was built. So we really didn't kind of move the house around a lot, and so we felt that by keeping that existing footprint, kind of worked with the project.
Okay, that's all for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment now, yeah? Okay, so far I have 10, we might have more. We usually keep a limit to three minutes each, if you can please be respectful of that, there will be a timer, so we don't go on forever. This, here comes another one, and I think she's writing one, so we could have a lot of speakers, so. All right, the first one's Alex Quong.
Hi, good evening, everybody, yeah. I live in Clearfield. So earlier June was saying like, how come somebody not really in the notification area and still want to talk something? First of all, my house physically can walk through the current property, because I used to work for my house and work Cuzaco and all the way down to Machison and walk all the way to Dantang, Millbrae, and then walk back home. So Millbrae is a very small town. And the second is, I live here since 1998, so we know our city is very important, location is very nice, and we're also seeing our city's value is going up, and also our city income is also part of a resource from our property tax. So I love to see our value is going up. All those houses, even my house, was built in 1960 plus, so it's about half, a half century old. So we have to make our property value go up. And I, as a resident here, also I consider I'm a permanent resident here, I would like to see our local and all the property is to go up. So I saw that will be bringing our city and more beautiful, and that's what the value of us, the community, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Joe Chen.
Good evening, planning commission. My name is Joe Chen, living on Loyola Drive for more than 20 years. I'm here tonight to support the remodeling and addition for the project at 210 Vallejo Drive. Many houses in Millbrae were built in the 50s and 60s. The plumbing and electrical systems are outdated and cannot meet the current building code requirement. Recently, there was a fire caused by outdated electrical wiring to my neighbor's house on Loyola Drive. Remodeling these houses to bring them to the current building standard is beneficial to the safety of the neighborhood and the community. I heard that there are some neighbors that concern the bayview will be blocked. As you can see from the architect's presentation, the neighbor's house are on a much higher elevation than the subject property, and are anywhere from 140 feet to 340 feet away from the project. The view cannot be blocked from such a distance and higher elevation. Actually, newer houses with nice landscaping will beautify the street and will enhance the view and increase the property value in a nearby neighborhood. I hope that the planning commission will approve the project tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stephanie Taylor.
Good evening to the planning commission and my Millbrae neighbors. My name is Stephanie Taylor, I'm a resident at 281 Vallejo Court. I oppose any renovation change at 210 Vallejo Drive that takes away my family's current view. The current design review permit shows an elevation change that negatively affects my family's view. There are two compelling reasons for my opposing 210 Vallejo Drive's request to restrict my family's view. Number one has to do with what's equitable. We currently have an established view of San Bruno Mountain. For one homeowner to take away our view is, at worst, selfish, at best, inequitable. Number two has to do with the economic impact, which the previous speaker, both previous speakers just spoke about. 210 Vallejo Drive will benefit economically by increasing their vertical footprint. However, when multiple residences, including mine, is negatively impacted, the economic impact is multiplied negatively. There's multiple units on Vallejo Court compared to one address on Vallejo Drive. Words that I heard the architect and the applicant speak earlier about smidgen, very little impact, honestly, I don't think there's a view issue. I don't agree with that. In fact, qualitatively, my view is impacted. I've, my, the property has been in my family ever since I was three years old, so without giving away my age, it's been decades. Hundred Easter eggs in the backyard, enjoy many family barbecues, it's a great location for a view, and we can look at pictures about inches and feet all day long. But what it comes down to, come over to my house, come into my backyard, and you will see that my view, my family's view and my neighbor's view, is qualitatively impacted. I am all for renovating and improving infrastructure, residences in Millbrae, but not at the expense where one homeowner wants to take away the view from my home and my neighbor's homes that are already established. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening from the planning commissioner and to everybody. My name is Sonia Desai, this is my husband Roger Desai. We live at 229 Vallejo Court, and we have bought this property six years ago. Since then, we have had two children, and we are expecting to raise our children there and grow up there. And the number one thing that sold us with this property was the view. We have amazing bay views out of our window, that is what our property is. Again, the fact that the architect has said that, you know, there's very little impact, going to be no obstruction, the pictures that were taken, that the architect has actually taken, are not an indication of our view out of our units and what the view that's going to be obstructed is. We have actually taken pictures from our unit that show exactly the height of the roof and how that's going to impact it. And you can see that the, there's going to be quite a bit of blockage of the mountains, of the skyline. That's, that's our home, I mean, that is what we see out of our property. I just don't believe that the pictures that you guys have seen there are a real indication of the block that we're going to have. And again, yes, this one property may benefit economically, but we're talking about five units, four units per property, that's 20 units that's views are going to be blocked. That's a huge financial impact to us, you know, that's decreasing our property value. I'm in support of them wanting to improve their property, I understand that they would like an upgrade and renovate, but I don't believe that it should be at the detriment to myself and all of our neighbors here having that negative impact. I really would like to show some pictures that I have taken from our property, since the architect has put up the roof, so that you can actually see where the new roof line is and the block that's going to be created from our unit. So if it's possible for me to show these.
Is it?
I mean, I think it's really important that you, that you see this, because I just don't think the pictures-
Go ahead.
Yes, they can be passed to the commissioners.
And you can see there's one, and that's their pole line, and then you can actually see like that if you walked up-
Microphone, please, thanks.
And so there's duplicate pictures in there, showing the line of where the new roof is going to be, and then, in the second duplicates, I've actually shown what the blockage of our view is. And our unit is directly behind that house, there's going to be quite a bit of obstruction from that addition if they are allowed to do this. So in conclusion, I really hope that you guys take that into consideration, you know, the negative impact that we would all be facing here financially and emotionally, and that you decide that this is not okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Sorry, I know we have a lot of speakers, but if you can, just a quick question. So the pictures that you're giving us right now are from which part of your property?
From our living area, from our kitchen-
From your living, living room?
Living room, kitchen, and then there's one or two that are outside that are right from our deck. So our entire living space, essentially.
So you're on the first ground floor?
We're on the ground floor.
You're on the ground floor, and then the deck looks like it's on an upper floor?
Exactly, it's our neighbor's.
Oh, it's your neighbor, okay, so-
Oh, no, these, these pictures are all from my unit.
From the ground floor?
Yes, I believe that some of the pictures that you guys are seeing are actually way further out from the property.
That's fine, I, thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Michael Poon.
Good evening, planning commission. I'm living on Vallejo Court 21, unit 215, and I think at this point, you guys have understand that our neighbors' frustration was about the blocking of our view. Imagine you are living on top of the television-
Please stay close to the microphone, sorry.
Imagine you are living on the top of this television, and this is 210 Vallejo Drive. Your line of sight used to be like this, and probably looking at the bottom of that chair. Now, you raise a couple of feet, and then you have a flat wood roof extending out, you're probably looking at the bottom of that door. So this, I think this can clearly explain how our view is being obstructed. And another thing is that, as you probably would know, like, I think June is a Realtor, and like, a substantial amount of our home value is from the bayview, is from the view. Like, I understand that, like, if the other houses around us, they build another floor, it will increase the home values substantially, but that will be in our expense, which means that, like, we have less than, we have a lesser view, and our, and that our home value could decrease. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm the owner of 241 and 255 Vallejo, so I own the third building. The roof line, the increase in the roof line affects one of the units that I own. And to be pointed out also is, this is not a condo, this is an apartment. I pay a business license to the city of Millbrae. And as such, when that, the increase of the roof line blocks the view from my bottom unit pretty significantly.
Excuse me, you mentioned you're at Vallejo Drive, is there correction, is that Vallejo Court? Vallejo Court, okay.
And so significantly blocks the view from that one unit, all windows. And that's a function of the value of the property, as each one of my fellow neighbors has said. In my case, it's a whole building that's going to be affected. So I think that some consideration needs to be made about the fact, again, one person increases value, another person loses value. Thank you. another person loses value. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Paul Hong.
Good evenings, Commissioner. I'm a resident of the Bay Area. I live on Canejo Drive. I'm here to support the project. I have carefully reviewed the architect's design of this project. I think it looks pretty good. And I think it will look, I think that when the project is completed, it will be look pretty good. Also, I think it will enhance the value of the neighborhood. One thing I'd like to point out is this, that my house has a beautiful view. However, it's not totally unobstructed. I think it would be pretty difficult to have a house have an unobstructed view of the neighborhood. So I would say that the objection of the neighbor may be gone a little bit too far. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Sebastian Chamo, Sebastian, sorry.
Hello, my name's Sebastian Chamos. I live at 205 Vallejo Court. And I'm one of the many people who are going to suffer loss to the advantage of just one, one house being built. We've lived there for about 30 years. I have my, I'm retired, and I have an office that looks out at the unit under consideration. And it will cut out some of the view that I have. It'll affect us materially and financially. So I would like you to consider that the number of people who will lose is much larger than the individual unit that's going to be built. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Carley.
Hi, I'm Valerie Carley, and I live at 209 Vallejo Court. I'm here with my husband this evening. And I just want to clarify a few things. I don't know if you have a total picture of our Vallejo Court pattern, the way our buildings go, but the architect referred to as Unit 1, Unit 2, Unit 3, Unit 4, Unit 5. There's four separate residents in each one of those buildings, two on the ground floor and two on the top floor. So I just wanted to clarify that. I also wanted to challenge that you're collecting these support letters from neighbors in Millbrae. And I'd like to contest that if I can. I'm not aware that we could collect letters because we can, you know, we would also like to collect letters from our neighbors and relatives in Millbrae or in San Mateo County. So I saw a sheet that showed the count of people that support and the people that don't support this project. And there were a lot of people that supported the project that don't live on Vallejo Drive or even maybe Canejo. I also see that the people that are supporting the add-on are also probably other neighbors that also want to add-on. And so that is a concern for me. I am in my final home. I've moved to Millbrae to retire. My husband and I are retiring. We bought our beautiful condo, and it has a window, windows in every room that face the bay. And that's why we bought it. I understand as one person challenged that not, that not every view is without an obstruction, but I like to keep the view I bought. I know you can't buy a view, but really, our condos, that's the sales point in them. So I just, you know, hope you, hope you take a look at all the people that are here that are affected by this. And I appreciate your concerns also. Thanks.
Thank you. Virginia Chamos.
Hi, I'm Virginia Chamos, and I too live at Vallejo Drive 205 Vallejo Court, Vallejo Court. I'm so sorry. 205 Vallejo Court. And I would like to note that those pictures are not taken from our living area. Those pictures were probably the drone that was swooping around our neighborhood. But it doesn't indicate the true view from the living areas of the lower units. So I think it's misrepresenting the impact. We will be impacted. We've had 30 years in this residence, and I don't see why we should have to lose value to our property. You guys will lose revenue because all of our assessments are going to go down because our market value goes down to the benefit of one unit that will probably have an increased assessment. So dollars and cents, for me and for the city, I think it makes sense not to obstruct our view. And 23 inches doesn't sound like a lot, but it's definitely enough to, we look out from our unit toward the San Mateo Bridge, we won't be able to see that anymore. It's gone. So I really appreciate your consideration and look at this not from the drone view, but from the level that we're living. Thank you.
Thank you. Henry Sauer.
Hello, my name is Henry Sauer, and I own the property at 207 Vallejo Court. And my father owned the property prior to that. And just like everybody else here, we also feel as though those are our forever homes, where we will be spending the rest of our lives too. And when we moved in there, or when we, when we, when the property was purchased by our family, the views were there. And those views should stay there. We shouldn't be losing our views for the benefit of another person. Views have a monetary value, and nobody is talking about that here as far as how it's impacting us. Talk about property values, I understand that, but there's more to it than that. There's also lifestyle values, and that should be considered since Millbrae, right now, is one of the best lifestyles in the peninsula. We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be, our lifestyle shouldn't be infringed upon so that somebody else's could be enhanced. Thank you.
Thank you. Lawrence Puccinelli.
Yes, before I start, I'd like to just ask a question in relationship with Alad Wong.
I'm sorry, can you please come to the mic and speak to the project only?
How did you get these pictures from, you know, from, from the Vallejo Court showing this? I'm asking you. Use the drone. Did you get permission to go into the backyards of all these individuals?
Excuse me. This isn't time for a conversation with the applicant. If you have questions, you can ask us.
Okay. Well, this, this, the architect right now, I think he has permission from one of the 20 units to go in with the drone. Matter of fact, Jenny, who was just up before, that drone came down while she was doing gardening and scared the hell out of her without any, any one of us knowing that this guy was using a drone. But to further, that's, I just had to just pull that out. But I'm at 261 Vallejo Court, and I've been dealing with Sam resisting this for a, for a long time. And when the poles went up and everything went up, I went over to Sam and asked if he saw it. He said, yes, from the ground level, from the street level. And I said, well, why don't you come over to one of our properties or my property and take a look at it from there? You'll get the actual view there. Now, why don't you have the commissioners come over? And he said, no, it's from the ground level. And I don't think that's very fair to us.
Through the chair, staff is not permitted to go onto private property to see the actual views. We ask that the neighbors that have concerns send in their photos from the principal rooms, living rooms or bedrooms, so that we can evaluate those. But staff is not permitted to actually go on to the private property.
Now, the architect, when he was relating all this to you, were probably coming from all the upper units. I don't think he related to one lower unit at all. And believe me, this will have an impact on our, on our financials as far as the property goes, and the value will go down. And I just hope that you all take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Keiko Kuchichi. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner. I have one question to Mr. Norm. I live at 285 Vallejo Court. And the first floor and second floor of the 210 Vallejo Drive will be nine foot. And you are mentioning that this is the best you could have done. However, most common ceiling height for the single-family rooms are now eight foot. So I'd like to ask you if you can come down to the normal, most commonly ceiling height. So at least that gives us a little bit more room and a little bit more views, especially that roof is going to be flat. That's going to be probably blocking the lower unit views a little bit more. That's one thing that I was thinking about and asking you about, if you could consider. Another thing is, everybody already talked about the 20 units property value is going to be decreased by just one unit. Maybe the Vallejo Drive will be increasing, but that's expensive with 20 other units. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I don't have any more speaker slips. We're going to close the public comment now. Discussion? Or does the applicant want to, do we have any questions for the applicant? Do you want to address anything you are? Yeah.
And I'm sorry, through the chair, if I can, so just, I think it might be good just to let members of the public know who are here that we are, if we are closing the public comment, they're not going to be able to comment again. So if they do have anything that they do need to address, we should do so now, before we close it. So I think that's helpful because sometimes.
Grab a sleeper. Come, you have something to say? Speak first and give us a speaker slip when you're done, okay? Sorry. Just go ahead.
I'm a real estate agent at 235 Vallejo Court. I'm an upper unit. The view will be blocked a bit less for my upper unit, but for the lower units, it will affect them quite a bit. The, the other thing is that their storyboard posts that show the level, I mean, they have posts up there, and then they've got a net that slopes down like a swayback horse. So you don't really know where that level is. And recently, some of them have fallen off. So it's hard to tell where that roof line would be. And just the other thing is, yeah, there's four units. When he says it's one unit, there's four units per. And the upper units, you know, they're going to be affected. The lower units definitely affected, and the values will go down. That's it.
Thank you.
I think you already closed the public.
Well, we've sort of not completely closed it, but, yeah, you already had your chance. Is it a quick question?
Yes.
Okay. Step to the microphone, please. Microphone, please.
Assuming the flat wood was proposed is approved, like, was, so if the applicant or the owner came back later, maybe five years later, saying, oh, we have some problem with the drain, with the draining issue from the roof, like, it's leaking, we need to have a, have a, have that type of sloped roof, then how would, what's the position of the planning commission on allowing that improvement?
Thank you.
I think I heard maybe now three questions. The first question was dropping the ceiling height to eight feet. I'm a second-generation architect. My father started the firm in 1951 in San Francisco, world-renowned contemporary architect, worked in Chicago with some of the finest architects in the world, won international competition for design. I've been in this profession my whole life. I went to school at Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo, started when I was 18 years old, and now I'm in my 50th year of this business. I would have to say that maybe half of my projects have flat roofs. Technology today is superior to maybe the old tar and gravel roofs, even though those still work. So I don't see compromising the design of this project because maybe failure of a leak in the roof. Going to eight-foot-high ceilings is taking the design back to the 50s. I can't tell you the last time I had an eight-foot ceiling, maybe in a basement. But living spaces today with open space, having an eight-foot-high ceiling just doesn't work. Nine-foot ceilings are pretty much the standard of what we're doing today. So I think that, I understand the concerns about the view. I would like to ask the commissioners, what is the policy on homeownership of views? Is there an actual ordinance that says views are actually ownership? I think we respected the intent of minimizing the views, and I think we were well within our design of the project to work within your code of zoning to provide my client with his property rights to develop his property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do we have any questions for him right now? No? Okay, thank you. No. No, sorry. It's not, it's not. We're done with the public comment now. Thank you. Discussion? Anybody want to kick it off?
Okay, sure.
Okay, thanks.
Obviously, there's a lot of opposition to this project. And we do, you know, we do recognize when we do review the design plans that we see the common slips from the neighbors and the locations, as Jean mentioned. They might not necessarily be exactly adjacent to the home being developed. And we do understand a lot of these issues, and we take those into consideration. I do see a lot of compromise and concerns that the homeowner and the architect are addressing. I mean, obviously, this is the second go-around, and they appear to have put a lot of thought into this to kind of allay the concerns about the view. And it's about trying to, you know, balance the needs of both neighbors. I hear there's a lot of talk about it benefits one party only, but there has been a lot of compromise. There's a lot of the design change has been to obviously lower the building height, match the existing neighborhood. It's not out of scale with the other homes in the neighborhood, looking at the square footage and the neighboring properties. Height difference between the other neighbors, they recognize that. They put together a lot of sketches and measurements, although it may not have been from people's living rooms, as we noted would have been ideal. Distances to the neighbors were marked out. Distances to the neighbors were marked out. Distances, the neighbors immediately adjacent on Vallejo Drive were supportive of the project. We recognize that the people's main concerns are on Vallejo Courts and especially the bottom floor of those units. So there has been a lot of compromise. I hate to see that people really upset that, you know, it's only been fitting one party, that they hadn't made any concessions. There's been a lot of revisions, a lot of concessions I see here. But it's still a matter of really communicating and talking with the neighbors to reach some sort of compromise that everyone could be happy with and provide a win-win solution. I'm not sure what that is, but I would have liked to see more communications with the neighbors to see exactly what the people on Vallejo Court would have recommended. And there's a hard stance appears on the Vallejo Court population that it's like all or nothing, that it obstructs the view, that it shouldn't be there. I haven't heard one solution that would be a compromise from the Vallejo Court neighbors that maybe they could have designed it this way, or here's a suggestion that might be a compromise. I haven't heard that, so that's unfortunate.
Thank you.
So I have reviewed the plan in detail. I also visited the site and I have several observations. So according to the Plan A11.1, the elevation of the neighbors at Vallejo Court is roughly 21 feet higher than the subject property elevation on Vallejo Drive. So as in state, you know, as in being proposed, the property is being proposed to be at 21 feet, eight inches above the elevation of the street. So it's roughly one foot, eight inches higher than the ground-level elevation on Vallejo Court. So which means if you were to stand in front on Vallejo Court, you look over the roof line. So when I visited the site, I, you know, I concur that the, when I viewed the proposal, ground level of the Vallejo Court, I see less than significant view blockages standing on the street in between the buildings, between Building 3, Building 4, and between Building 2 and Building 3. The building heights of the proposed project has been reduced by six foot, 10 inches from the original proposal. And they're also changing it to a flat roof system. And it's a pretty significant compromise in the wake of the neighborhood input. And I understand that this is a challenging situation where trying to get a balanced approach between a proposal to develop and protection of someone's view. And I understand the sensitivity of that. So but when I consider view blockages, I think we're here, the planning commission is looking for what I consider as a balanced approach. One that would balance the enjoyment of the existing views from the neighbors, but also preserve the property rights of the owners to renovate and to develop. I think both parties have rights, and our job is to balance it. I mean, in this case, I think the original proposal by the applicant, it's already in compliance with the planning code and further resigned by the applicant by lowering the roof line by six foot, 10 inches. Consider that a pretty significant concession. The ground-level elevations on Vallejo Court was at roughly the same level as the top of the roof line of the proposal, which means by standing in front of the ground on Vallejo Court, you already see beyond the roof line. So we must also consider how much blockage, right, the proposed project will bring. And what I see is a vertical extension of two feet by 34 feet wide. It's like a rectangular box, right? So given how much current view of Vallejo Court, it's sort of a 270-degree view of the entire roof line, of the entire skyline of the SFO. You know, it's a single box of two by 34. I'm not sure that's quite enough to take away the entire view or property value. So again, you know, we're looking for a balanced approach here, not an absolute one side or another. So upon further review of the building height and the new design, I think in very much keeping with the characteristics already exhibited by 300, 304, and 308 Vallejo Street. All the properties show similar building heights measured from the street elevations and of similar architectural characteristics of flat roof line and somewhat of a modernistic look and feel. So in consideration of the proposal, I think my question here is whether or not the applicant has made a genuine sufficient modification to minimize the impact of the development that will bring. And what I see is a height reduction of six foot, 10 inches, a complete redesign of the roof line. And the proposal is no higher than those of the 300 blocks of Vallejo Drive. I find that there is a genuine compromise being offered here. And it fits in what I would consider a balanced approach and therefore has adequately addressed the issue being discussed by the neighbors. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. I actually live on Vallejo, so I pass by this almost every day. This is a really... This is a really tough one, I think, from the street for sure, as I pass by. I think, first of all, I would like to thank the applicant for trying to accommodate and bringing down that roof line, you know, reducing it by seven, almost seven feet. So I think that's a good thing. At the same time, it... I'm wondering in terms of just... This is a big house, so I, I mean, I know that, you know, that's the trend that we go through. But seeing a recreation room downstairs, a family room upstairs and whatnot, you know, adding on 13-something square feet. Kind of wondering if there's a way to be able to reduce that somewhat. So whether it be putting more on the ground floor, and that's why I was asking about the whole thought behind a master bed, you know, just the master bedroom downstairs and a recreation downstairs, as well as a family room upstairs. And it feels like a lot of space. So if there were a possibility of either just extending out the first floor to get what you need, the space, or at least reducing the second floor a little bit. It's tough because, I mean, we got a packet full of lots of pictures and just trying to go through it. And I, and then we had the one, the other photos that came up, I don't know from who. I can't remember, Desai, I think, who came up. And there it looks a lot more pronounced. I don't know if, I mean, that was my feeling on it, is that the view blockage felt a lot more pronounced. And I honestly, I mean, I understand that staff can't visit places because of liability issues. But pictures are really hard. I mean, I've, we've gone through so many where we're getting photos and trying to get a perspective of... It depends on where you take a picture from, honestly. You know, you can take a picture, you know, all sorts of different angles to highlight what you want to say. And that's really a difficult thing. So... And so there's my concern to a certain degree, is I'm getting different kind of pictures of it. I know there's only a two-foot difference. But how much of a, you know, and so I commend that that's there and that it's been reduced to what it was before. But at the same time, it's... I'm a little bit stumped, honestly, and that's why I'm having a hard time talking just in terms of the impact, what exactly is the impact? And I really wish that I could have gone to see it personally. Second, I'm kind of curious as to what the other commissioners feel about the design. Because I'm not that thrilled about the design itself either, the front elevation in terms of, it just feels like a rectangle box and then you have another rectangle box right on top of it. So I don't know, that doesn't scream out to me, maybe... And so that, and I, I respect that the, you know, architect took into consideration light pollution and trying to keep out the windows, but it just feels very... Plain, I guess. I'll put it that way. So that's my thought on that. But I honestly wish I could have done a site visit, just to be totally upfront because I don't know what, I'm looking at different pictures. I know that it's only two feet difference. But it's tough. It depends on where you're coming from, so... I'm really torn.
It's interesting with the box design, it actually cuts away some of the roof line of the existing building. So it will actually allow more view because, is that, because if you look...
Please.
Please respect the commission's time.
I mean, if you haven't thought about it or you've thought about it before, go ahead, you make your comment. But I'm just observing also that there is a cutaway of the roof line. So on this, there is that box, as Jeanne mentioned, in the middle. But on the sides, it is actually going to be lower than the existing house right now. So it does allow more view on the sides rather than, as opposed to the box, minimal.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of my comment about the design, I'm just, that's strictly without regard to view or anything else. So that's why I'm just saying, the way that appears to me, I'm not, personally, I'm not that thrilled about it, the way that it looks. And that's, that's just me. And I'm just wondering if, if there's a possibility of getting what the owners need on a first floor, extending out the back, not having a recreation room and a family room, being able to extend out the back because there is some space, and then being able to make the front a little more attractive. I have a little more flexibility in that. So I, you know, I don't want to start, we're not supposed to be designing for other people, but that's, those are just some thoughts that I have in terms of, you know, to... Because I think they're trying to do the flat roof to make, to accommodate, which is great. But I don't know if I'm that thrilled with the result of it, so...
Through the chair, I wanted to address Joe's comment about the, looking at the possibility of addition on the first floor at the rear. Our development standards require 1,000 square feet of rear open space on the lot. And there's also a 10-foot rear setback. This was one thing that staff looked at when, in consultation with the architect and looking at modifying design. That was one thing we looked at, is would there be a possibility of doing the expansion on the ground floor? The architect, the owner expressed an interest in wanting to maintain that small backyard open space and not go into that area. And they were also limited by that 1,000-square-foot rear open space requirement that's required by code.
Thank you.
And through the chair, if I can respond to that. So I actually looked at the minimum rear yard space and they have 1910. So it's required to be 1,000, so there's 900, you know, 900 square feet. I mean, and again, it's not for me to try to design for other people, but I'm just saying, is it... I feel like there might be some room there.
When I look at the design, I... Naturally, when I see something like this, you know, with a box on top of the other, I would normally see a little bit more an extended roof line, like on the side, for example, that would give it a little bit more overhang on the side of the building. But I think they took it out in preservation of trying to keep the view corridor as open as possible. And I think that's sort of the design consideration that goes into it when they did it. And that's why they have the extended roof line towards the front and the back, rather than being on the side. So I think that's part of the consideration there. In terms of backyard space, I think it's actually a benefit to have more backyard space as in keeping with the mid-block open space between the buildings. The more the backyard there is, I think it's actually better. Again, we're not here to design the building for the applicant. I mean, if they chose to have a master bedroom on the bottom, they chose to have a master bedroom on the bottom. They designed a home for their own personal use. We're not here to design it for them. But I would be more happy to see a greater-sized backyard so that we can preserve more mid-block open space and therefore also giving more light and air for the rear neighbor as well. So something to consider there. I think the key here is not so much how much space or is massing, you know, in terms of first floor versus second floor. It's whether or not we're addressing the issues that some of these people here on Vallejo Court is mentioning. And I think that's the key here, whether or not we have a balanced approach.
Of course, even though, you know, all the building codes may be met and complies with all the city standards, you know, the, obviously, the neighbors do have a right to make their comments and have a voice in the community. So that's what we need to consider. And then... I guess the question is, is there anything else that could be done that's more of a compromise? So, you know, this, this, there has been a lot of compromise again. And the building, by having the box on top of the first floor, so to speak, it's not as massive and it's not as rectangular as the Homes to the South because the Homes, three Homes to the South have the same flat roof design, but they're massive rectangular buildings without any setback at all on the sides. So there is, there is much more limited second-floor space for this design than what might have been if they were designed like the Homes just to the south on Vallejo Drive. What more could there have been for compromise in terms of this design? I'm not sure.
To your comment on the design of it, when I first saw it, I went, ooh, there's no windows on the front, really. Very, very small. But when the architect explained his reasoning and the thoughtfulness that was put into it in terms of the light pollution at night, your night view is very pretty and this will have a lesser impact on it. And I don't know, I'm trying to figure out what they could do, even if they put more at the back of the house. What are we, I don't think we lose, I don't think we gain anything. I don't see what would, what would change to the front if we add it to the back. Because probably the box on top doesn't get any less wide. So I don't, I don't see any benefit to going backwards.
And that's a tremendous concession, too, to not have as many windows on the west-facing. That means your afternoon light coming into the house is limited. So there's a big concession for not having those windows on the west side of the house.
And... The applicants did a radical redesign of their project to accommodate the neighbors' concerns. As Commissioner Feng put it perfectly, pretty much. I mean, dropped it near seven feet in height. It's much smaller than it would have been in the first place. And no one owns your view. I'm sorry, but nobody owns a view. And private property rights are important. And the applicant has a right to expand their home. And they've been very thoughtful to the neighbors in making a huge design change. So... That's where I sit.
If I may, just through the chair. It seems like, my feeling is that the other commissioners are kind of okay with the height. Again, I really feel like if we were able to do a site visit, I think we should have been able to do that because I think we should have seen it firsthand what it is. If, if, having said that...
Are you talking about site visit from the people's homes? Because we did walk around the neighborhoods.
Right, but from the homes, so, because we've done that before. So, but having said that, I do understand that there have been concessions made. I still do feel that the design could be improved. I mean, I think not having some of the light pollution is nice, but this doesn't, you know, it's not appealing to me. And, you know, the houses, the places that are to the south, those are multi-residential buildings. So they're not single-family homes. And so I think trying to use those as a standard, I wouldn't really go with that. But I, I don't know, I just would like, it just feels like a box on top of a box at this point. And if there's some kind of articulation, I mean, Commissioner Feng mentioned something about the roofs that you would usually see, but I guess they didn't, they couldn't do it. If there's something, I mean, I'm not a designer, but, you know, we've had houses where were, you know, articulation and things like that. you know, articulation and things like that are a little more, something a little more nuanced, or, I don't know, move it to the side or make it, I don't know. I, and again, it's my, my job to design it, but I just, I'm not that thrilled with the design either. So I, I think, you know, one, again, I wish that we could have done a site visit, and I would like to ask that in the future of staff, if people do ask us to go see it, give us the opportunity, because we've done it before. It's not the first time. So we have done it before, and it, it would make things a lot easier. And I know there are sometimes when we, we do have to, you know, sometimes we do have to balance between, you know, each homeowner's rights versus the neighbor's rights, property rights as well. And we have to balance that. But we do have, you know, an ordinance that does talk about protecting primary views. And I know, you know, it's hard to say somebody owns a view, but we do say that we're going to try to protect the primary views. And not to have seen it firsthand, it's, I, I just feel, you know, I don't like moving ahead without having been able to do that. So, so that's my, and I'll just, I won't keep hashing, going back on that. But, and then my second is, if there were a way to somehow improve on this, I don't know what, but maybe the windows do, on the first floor. So the second floor is where they took out the windows, but on the first floor, you know, maybe have more windows or something. I, I just, it doesn't, anyway, I'll stop at that.
I just, I just want to add, Jean, we, I believe the applicants did take into consideration view, view impact mitigation. I mean, the increase of the roof height is less than two feet. I mean, we've, we've, can, we are supposed to try and protect the, the views, and that has happened. I believe that it has happened, so.
So I have done a site visit. I think you need to use the gavel. So I have done a site visit, just so everybody knows, right, for the public record here.
As I have.
I visited a site on Vallejo Drive. I walk up and down the block. And I take sort of a mental measurement.
Could the audience just stay quiet? Thank you.
Yeah, please respect the commission's time. Walk up and down to Vallejo Drive, looking at some of those buildings on the 300 blocks and how they impact the views, you know, if you were to be standing on Vallejo Court. Whether or not they're single-family home, multi-unit, I mean, it doesn't really matter. And at the end of the day, it's about view blockages is really what we're talking about here all night. I see this house that's being designed. It's similar, if not less, impact than those 300-block houses on Vallejo Drive. So if those houses should stand, there shouldn't be a problem with this particular property. And that's the first reaction I have when I looked at it. Again, it's, there's no perfect solution and say, well, you know, I'm going to remodel the house and be able to develop it and have zero impact to anybody. Again, do we, do we not genuinely believe have a balanced approach? Do we, do we not believe that there's a genuine effort to try to make the neighbors' concern to be addressed as much as we can? Again, the ordinance here is, it's not an absolute blockage of any development, even though there is a slight blockage of view. The question that I need to ask myself as a commissioner is that, did the applicant, did he not genuinely make the best effort possible to preserve the property right of the property owner for wanting to develop and addressing the concern of the neighbors and try to minimize the impact that they do have? And I think that, agree, that has happened. So I think the project is, is in keeping with what I consider the ordinance is supposed to protect.
I would think that we still need to balance the Vallejo Court neighbors as much as possible and as we can. So has there been, in reviewing these consultation forms from the neighbors, question for the staff, has there been any other comments, suggestions, recommendations on these comment forms or to the architects that have not been addressed? Has there been any suggestions as to, besides the all or nothing option, approve or not approve, has there been any other recommendations that neighbors might have had to address this situation?
The majority of the comments were just specifically, had concerns about the impacts of the view. I believe I had some neighbors come to the planning counter and look at the plans, and I did receive a comment about the ceiling height, there's questions about the floor to ceiling height. And they wanted to look at that and see, you know, whether the floor, how high the ceilings were. And I believe it may have been the, the neighbor that commented this evening, that it might have been the same neighbor. But that was the only sort of suggestion of further compromise, looking at the, like the ceiling heights.
And I guess, question for the staff in the designs of this, is this pretty much foundation set? Are they using the existing foundation? Are they not going further down that they might lower the entire building? Or is it the same slab that they're building on?
My understanding is that they're, they're building, as, as you saw from the plans, they're building basically in the same footprint, the same slab, but I would ask the architect if he would like to come up and address that question.
But before that, I'd be extremely careful in making a suggestion, because if it were to drive the building into the ground, and then, I'm not sure what the issue with the structural analysis would be and water table. I'd be extremely cautious about making that suggestions before we go further on that, please. I think the issue here is, again, I think the first question that we need to all concur and discuss is, do we, do we not believe that there's a balanced approach here? Instead of thinking about, you know, whether or not we should shift the square footage from one story over another, or whether or not it is a box, or whether or not, you know, we can drive the building down to the ground. Do we, do we not believe there's a genuine effort here being made to balance the property right versus the neighbor's loss of enjoyment of the view?
I would say there's no question, there's been a lot of compromise. And I mean, obviously, there's a design, complete design change. It's been a year approximately to redo the plans and go through this process twice. So appears to be every effort to make concessions.
Yeah. So I think that's sort of the angle that we need to first look at, whether or not it meets the finding that is being discussed, particularly finding number C. I mean, I don't think there is any discussions in terms of finding between A, B, D, and the others, but whether or not we can make the finding that says the project will not cause a significant view impact to neighborhood views from principal room of residence unless it is proven by the applicant that there is no other viable or cost-effective alternatives. I mean, I do see a genuine effort to try to minimize it. I mean, it's not completely do away with all the blockages, but I believe that there is a genuine effort there. I mean, the first design was February. And then, another design is July. So that's a five-months effort, consultation with the neighbors from the first go-round to the second go-round. I see an effort there. The consultation that the applicant has made from the first design, from the first design to the second design.
Commissioner, just the back and forth, just.
Yes, understand. Do we, do we not believe that there's an effort to try to minimize the view blockages?
Absolutely.
I believe there is.
Oh, sorry. Um, oh, are you, I'm sorry, are you finished?
I, I would motion to, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the design review permit for 210 Vallejo Drive to allow the construction of a new two-story residence located in the single-family home district, one zoning. That's my motion.
May I, before we finish? So I agree there have been concessions made. What I would say is that I don't think we should be comparing with the first design and the second. I mean, to a certain degree, we do, because there have been concessions made. But it's not like we've, in the past, always just said, well, they made an effort, and that's, since they made an effort, we're good with it. I don't think that by itself can be a measure to say they, you know, they've made concessions, because we've had times when we've had projects come back multiple times, because they make a concession, but it could be better, and it could be better. So, so I, I'm, you know, I don't want to lay down the precedent of if an applicant comes, they make some changes, and it's better, that that necessarily means it's where we need to be. So I, I'll just make that comment to that. In terms of, again, for me, where I'm, I'm kind of stuck is because I didn't get to actually see firsthand what the impacts are. And, and so, and, and again, I mean, I, I drive down Vallejo almost every day, so I, you know, I'm, I'm pretty very familiar with that level, but I haven't been up to Vallejo Court in the back, you know, to see, or inside to see what happens. And, you know, we've had situations where, again, you see photos from one angle, you see photos from another, and I just don't feel comfortable without at least having seen it to be able to say, this is fine. And so that's my comfort level. And secondly, I, I would like to ask again, if, if it seems like it's going in the direction of moving forward, I guess, are the other commissioners fine with the design the way it is? Because I, I still feel like even that could be improved upon. So I'll just state that and, and not say it again.
Through the chair, if I may. Sam, Mr. Fielding, there has been an email notifying the entire planning commission to go out to the site to visit. Was that correct? I remember seeing that email.
Yes, there, there was an email notified to go out and visit the site when the story poles were installed.
Correct.
And so that was the, that was the opportunity for planning commissioners to, to visit the site and, and see what the proposed project would look like, given the, the story poles that were installed.
Did everybody get that email?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wong.
Yes.
Yes.
As, as a result of that email, I went out to the site twice, daytime and nighttime. And I sit in, I walk in front of Vallejo Court, between building two and three and between building three and four. There is an elevation difference between Vallejo Drive and Vallejo Court, and that's 20, according to A11 dot one, there's a 21-feet difference in elevations. I mean, if these two streets were sort of at par elevation-wise, I would be more concerned about it. If there's a natural grade change of 21 feet, assuming a natural person standing in front of it, say, five feet five, for example, with an eye level, you're already at 26 feet taller than the roof than, than the Vallejo Drive. With the building being at 21 feet and change, you look over the roof line already, as it does. So to say that, to say that, to say that there is a view blockage, a significant view blockage, even at that grade level, I think it's a pretty tough case to prove.
Excuse me. No.
I, I understand that there will not be a complete agreement for everyone.
The, the standard is, is there a significant degradation in view? The staff has decided that there is not a significant impact on the view, and I think the commission is leaning in that direction. It's not that there will be zero impact. You are 20 feet above grade, hundreds of feet away, and the house is as small as it can be on a second story, and only two feet higher than it currently is. The impact to the view is negligent. I'm sorry. Please stop. We're discussing up here. We know, we know how you feel. No, I'm talking. Thank you.
So my concern, too, again, lastly, is that there's been no alternative solution that's been presented. So just for the public comment period, it's been basically all or nothing. So it puts us in a position whether to just approve it as it is or deny it. And so if, if we spend time going out and visiting the site, it really doesn't provide an alternate solution. It's just, again, all or nothing. So it's just, would extend the project, and there's no solution put forward that would mitigate it if we do find that there is an obstruction or not an obstruction. So then, you know, what's the process next after that? And then it would just go around through this process again. So I believe that I would second the motion based on the information that was presented, that it's basically approve or not approve, because I haven't seen any alternative proposal about what we should do about this, because that's the position we're put in, is that to approve it the way it is or not. I haven't heard of any other solution, unless the architect has some concession, final concession that he can make to, you know, they run the risk of us not approving it or approving it based on gauging the commission stance and the comments. I don't know what way, you know, the other commissioners will go into vote, so it may run a risk of denying the project or approving of the project. If there's any last concessions, maybe the architect can present.
I would be extremely careful with that comment and strategy in that, you know, there is a room full of neighbors, and try to negotiate a last-minute concession would be extremely difficult. I mean, just like any other project that goes before us, right, whether it's here or council or anywhere else, we are being presented a project with the details that is being presented on these papers. We make a vote, whether or not we approve it, or continue it, or deny it. Those are the three options we have. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And then if I could just offer just a few comments, and then I appreciate the commission's conversation here this evening. It's, it's not an easy one. Staff, too, in our analysis of the application, you know, we really did hone in on finding C as well. And to what degree did we feel it was a significant visual impact? I think Commissioner Feng was making the point about the width of the structure being about 33 to 34 feet across a horizon that has a, a, a view corridor of almost probably 270 degrees. The amount of square, the amount of height that's being added to the, to the existing ridgeline. And in our estimation, those two factors did not equate to a significant visual impact, which is why we made the recommendation that we did. And so I would just encourage you to continue to look to those findings as you have your conversation. But, and, and then, yes, to answer your question, you do have the three options available to you for, you could actually vote to approve this evening, you could approve it with added conditions, you could vote to deny the application and/or continue the application for more information.
I have a motion on the table.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Motion passes three to one. 10-day right of appeal.
I'm sorry.
We're going to take a three-minute break. We'll come back at nine o'clock. We'll come back at 9 o'clock. Okay, we're going to get started pretty soon. Can we all take our seats? Okay, and we're back. Moving on to 141 Magnolia, a design review permit to allow the construction of a 2-story second unit in the duplex residential R2 zoning district. Sam?
Good evening again. This project is located at 141 Magnolia Avenue. It's a design review permit to allow the construction of a 2-story second unit in the duplex residential R2 zoning district. The project's site is located at 141 Magnolia Avenue, between Victoria Avenue to the north and Chadbourne Avenue to the south. The home is located in the southeastern portion of Millbrae, on a north-south street, 2 blocks west of El Camino Real, and 2 blocks north of Millbrae Avenue. The 6,000-square-foot interior lot contains a single-family, single-storing residence, including a non-conforming, single-car attached front garage, and its own duplex residential R2 identified in the general plan as medium-density residential. Going through the existing proposed project and neighbor support, the existing residence is a split-level, first- and second-floor building. The lower first floor contains crawl space, a single-car garage, workroom, bathroom, and stairway up to the second floor. The second floor contains an uncovered patio at the front entrance, which enters into the foyer with a closet, a living room with fireplace, dining room, kitchen, rear studio, 1-bedroom with closet, hallway with closet connecting to the bathroom, and a master bedroom with a master bathroom and closet. There is a stairway off the foyer downstairs to the lowered level of the building. The proposal is to add a rear 2-story second-dwelling unit to the existing single-family residence. The first floor of the second-dwelling unit will contain an open kitchen to dining room, a bathroom, a 2-car garage, and stairway to the second floor. The second floor will contain the stairway, the stairway from the first floor to second floor hallway, leading to 3 bedrooms and a master bedroom with closets and 3 full bathrooms. The new second unit will have a 2-car garage at the rear of the property as required in the R2 residential zone. The existing non-conforming, single-car garage with driveway will remain for the front unit. The applicant notified 6 adjacent neighbors as required. One neighbor responded with a form in support of the project, and the remaining 5 neighbors did not respond. Staff did receive certified mail receipts from the applicant, basically proving that they had sent out the project description and site plan to the neighbors. This is the information on the proposed project. The current existing height of the building will be 15, is 15 feet 3/4 inches, and it's proposed to be 25 feet 8 inches when you add the, the second-story unit at the rear. The maximum building height allowed at this site is 30 feet. And looking at the lot coverage, the lot coverage is going from 29% to 46%, and the floor area ratio will go from 39% to 73%. This project informs to all the development standards for R2 zoning. This is the site plan. The box in the red indicates the portion of the new addition. This is the existing single-family home here in the front, with a driveway and a single-car garage located here. The proposal is to add this permeable surface driveway from the front to the rear here, and having a ground-floor 2-car garage here and the 2-story unit at the rear. These are the existing and proposed elevations. This is the existing. And this is the proposed elevation, showing the addition. From the east elevation, this is the existing front, single-family home, and then the 2-story second unit attached to the rear here with the entrance to the 2-car garage. The design, as you can see, the design, the roof line and the exterior design elements and materials will be built to, to match the existing, single-family home. These are the west elevation and the north elevation for the proposed plan. As you can see for the front here, this is the view from the front. The architect has designed it to basically integrate well with the, the front home, the, the design of the roof lines, and the materials will match the front, single-family home. These are the required findings that the planning commission is requested to review when evaluating this project. Staff is recommending the planning commission review the project and consider the public testimony and findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution approving the application for design review permit to allow the construction of a 2-story second unit in the duplex residential R2 zoning district at 141 Magnolia Avenue, subject to the attached conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation, and the architect and property owners are here, available to answer questions.
Would the applicant like to come up now?
Actually, may I ask one question?
Sorry, sorry, Sam, one question.
Just really, really quick one, because you mentioned that it's coming before the planning commission because it proposes demolition of the single-story home and new construction of the 2-story. So I just wanted to confirm, the existing home is pretty much staying intact, right? Or, and they're keeping it pretty much the same, and except for, I think there was a little studio or something off the back. That's the only thing that's being, so I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything, so that I'm just, would like clarification on that.
Yes.
So the existing home is staying, there's no work except the new roof and the back?
Yeah, let me clarify that for you. I'm going to pull up the, the floor plans. So this is the existing lower level and upper, upper level. And so the, the front portion of the home will stay the same, but they're, they're doing some interior improvements. So this is the proposed, this is the main upper floor. This is the, this is the actual duplex unit at the back. So, yeah, you are correct. The, the single-family home in the front is, the, the footprint is staying the same. The, the project itself is the, the highlighted section in red that it was boxed out. That's where the, the actual construction is, is going to be. So if it says demolition of the first story, that, that is, that'll be correct in the staff report, that, that it should be an addition of a 2-story second unit at the rear.
Sam, I also have a question about, it's just kind of interesting about this neighborhood and the street, that the property is zoned for R2?
Yes.
And there's neighboring properties that are R1, R3, R2. It's kind of a hodgepodge. What's, what's the vision or what's, what's the intent of all these different zone classifications in this street? And what's our vision of this?
So the, the area is, is zoned R2 duplex. And this is a, this, this area extends, basically, we look at the site plan. So this portion here, this area here, this entire, like, 3 or 4-block stretch just north of Millbrae Avenue, is all zoned R2. And within the R2, there are some homes that are existing, single-family homes. The owners have chosen to, you know, they purchased the home maybe years ago, and they have had no desire to expand it. But for the, the residents that are in the area that would like to add a duplex, it's an allowed use, it's an allowed use for R2 zoning, so they can add a duplex as long as they meet the development standards for an R2. So there is a mixture of homes there, but the whole area is zoned for medium-density R2, so that is an option for residents within this area.
Then can you tell me, for the R2 requirements, there's no second-story setback requirements?
That's correct.
But what about for the parking requirements?
So the parking requirements for R2 duplex zone are 2 parking, 2 garage parking space per unit. So the applicant is providing the required 2-car garage parking for the, the duplex unit at the rear of the property. This particular home has, and many of the older homes have existing, single-family garages, so they don't have what would typically in our R1, say, if it was an R1, single-family zoning, we would require a 2-car garage. But this is an existing, non-conforming home, and however, it does have the, uh, single-car garage here, and it does have space for a, a vehicle to park in the driveway here. And they are in compliance with our development standards for R2, with the 2-car garage for the, the unit that's being added at the rear of the property.
So given that there's higher density on this lot, R2, then meets these design standards to address, for example, more cars, more parking because of the additional units and...
Yes, actually, I'm glad you brought up that point, because I, I did want to note that today's staff received a letter from, in the mail, or, yeah, I believe it actually came in the mail today. And it was from a neighbor, and she did not leave her, her name or address, but her concern was parking, parking in the neighborhood, parking in the front. She felt that there was, an issue about parking spaces in the front area. However, thi, this project as designed does comply with our parking requirements for R2. It does have the 2-car parking for, per, per-unit garage parking, and it does have the single parking space in the garage and the space in the driveway available. So it, that's like in addition to street parking.
Can you also mention the differences between the lot, maximum lot coverage for R1 and R2?
Sure. Yes, so for R2 zoning, the, the main difference is that the FAR, floor area ratio requirement is allowed is 88%, and the lot coverage, or the lot coverage is 50%, which is the same for R1, single-family residential. So for an R1, the lot, the FAR allowed is 55%. For an R2, the lot coverage, I mean, the FAR allowed is 88%, lot coverage is the same, 50%. And if, for this project, the applicant is in compliance with, with those rules. Their maximum lot coverage would be at 46%, and their maximum floor area, or their floor area ratio would be going up to 73%.
That, also, the first-floor front setback, it's pretty far, 20 feet, so it seems like it's designed to have a transition in the neighborhood from, like, higher density to the, single-family residences, because I imagine that there's some frontage, so that it appears more like a, and the design appears like it's a regular, single-family house from the front.
Yes, the, the ground-floor setbacks are the same as an R1, so you would have your 20-foot front setback, 5-foot side setbacks, and then the, the 10-foot rear setback.
Okay, just, thanks for the other commissioners' patience, because I guess I'm new to the commissions. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sam. The applicant? Sorry. We have more questions for Sam tonight than ever. I love it.
Just one quick one.
Yes.
Since they're adding additional unit, there's no application for subdivision, right? This maintains as a duplex rather than 2 condominiums.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any more? I've done it twice. Okay, now you can come up.
Good evening, good evening, commissioners. My name's Eric Kane, the architect. So quite a coincidence, last time, over 10 years, I was here attending the meeting, the project was 130... the project was 137 Magnolia. So that was R3 zone, only two houses away. So my client, this is my clients, Mr. and Mrs. Zhou, and they have three daughters. And mainly I'm here trying to explain why they want to add a second unit. So that was R3 zone, just two houses down is R2 zone. So because they have three daughters, and they're all in the college high school year, and they all need privacy. They all need the space. So this project, because I'm too busy, the slow is already delayed them almost a year. It's, it's nothing else but myself's fault. The, the daughter grow very fast, so they really need a space. That's the main reason. We want to add the space, add a two-car garage. And also they have the elderly parents coming over, so they're gonna take some of the room from the front house. So we're adding the four bedrooms on the second floor and two-car garage. And Millbury probably the most stringent parking requirement in the whole Bay area. So we have to, not only the two-car garage, but certain size we have to maintain. So that pretty much take out two-thirds of the first floor and just leaving a kitchen and a living room. So we put four-bedroom on the top. By doing that, we have to remove non-permitted or whatever the studio, which elevated studio under about six-foot across space. So that's the only thing we took out, to take it away from the existing house. By doing the construction, owner decided to change the whole roof to match, as we have the sample submitted. So it's not gonna be the Spanish-style roof, it's gonna be composition shingle. The color is still reddish composition shingle. So they're gonna have the new paint for the entire, for the existing house, and of course new, and the new roof. That's the only two changes to the existing house. Then for the parking, there's a benefit. No matter what I say, any city I go to, we always say, oh, we have sufficient parking. But most of the people don't park in the garage. So, but in this case, they probably have to because they can't find any parking spaces. Luckily, or they have this driveway all the way to the back. So when people coming back in the late hours, they cannot find parking, they have to park on their driveway. So they have a capability taking five cars altogether. So when there's overloaded on Magnolia, at, at least they will not contribute additional car to the street. That's all I can say. It's meet the parking requirement. But on top of that, in reality, they can park two more cars on their own new driveway to the second unit. But that's probably what I can say, the design, Sam did a good job, really explained in detail. I couldn't even do that, with too many projects, I already forget half of it. But for the, the needs, why they want to develop such a big size? Even though we're still like 10% less than the maximum FAR, but it's quite big. And that, all the surrounding houses, they have second units. They may not have two-story second unit, but it's all second units. And this is probably the only one doesn't have. And the cross street there developed like a three or four condominium-style units, so... And overall, I think it, from the architect's instance, is a little bit too big. But looking at the real needs, the housing needs, and the lot size and the surrounding neighborhood, this is still a little less than the average of what people want to do. So that's it, I'm here to answer.
Thank you. Are any questions for, questions for you right now?
Got a couple of questions. I think I should have actually asked the staff a little earlier, but Sam? Say propose on the site plan, it's a new permeable driveway at nine foot six inches. Is that sufficient? Do we have an ordinance for that? Is that the width of the driveway? Usually I see 10 for such a long driveway. This one here being nine foot six inches, I just want to make sure that... It is good?
Yes, it, it is sufficient. It was reviewed by staff at Public Works, and they, they looked at the dimension of the driveway. And it, it is sufficient for, for them to be able to access the, the rear garage, the two-car garages.
Actually, do we have a standard for that? Do we have a standard width that they require to maintain?
Staff could research that. I can take a look at, we, we do have in the code our parking dimensions and aisle width dimensions requirements, so... I was just looking that up right now.
Well, Sam does that. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, the second thing is that I noticed the, in the rear of the lot, where are the two new car garages gonna be? The turnaround, sort of the cushion area where you turn into the garage, is only about 20 feet and change.
Right.
Is that sufficient for you to back out and turn around and face forward to the, to the traffic when you come back out?
It, it should work. It's tight, but it should work.
A standard car is 16, 17 feet.
Right, you have to maneuver a couple of times to make it work.
And, you know, SUV is, my, my X5 is 17 feet and change. I, I would be in a difficult situation to back out. I just want to make sure that, you know, you know what you're getting into.
And also because that 23 feet, you can't start maneuver one or two feet before you get it to the door. That's another thing for, compared to a tight garage. And also this actually, it didn't, never been built on the 137, but this about the same space over, on that project.
How deep is your garage?
23.
Your garage is 23 foot deep?
Right, that's the minimum requirement.
The minimum requirement is 20 by 20?
No, not, not here.
Unless you're having utility, that which you have a utility closet. I think the minimum is 20 by 20, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right, Sam? Mr. Fielding? I know, I know, I'm sorry. I'm asking you to multitask a little bit here. The minimum size of a garage between rock to rock, is that 20 feet?
Yes, it's 20, it's 20 by 20 foot clear.
Yes, 20 by 20, clear, rock to rock. Sheet rock to sheet rock.
It will provide 20, 20, 20.
It's fine that you provide 23, it meets the code. I just want to make sure you have enough space to turn around and back out the car so you can face forward when you come out of that long driveway. Something for you to consider.
So what we can do on the structure design is make the door a little wider than 16 foot. That one foot maybe make a lot of difference.
Right now you have a 16-foot garage door.
Right, right. So we can make a 17, custom-made. That make a big difference.
Okay.
Definitely we're gonna work with that.
If you're comfortable with that. I just don't want a neighbor come back in a year later after you build and say, you just hit my fence. Something for you to consider. Okay? And I also noticed that there is a front porch in the existing unit. There's sort of an overhang on the roof line, and then there's a post. Sort of about 17, 18 feet from the front of the building with a nine-foot six-inch driveway.
That's, what we can do on the working drawing can indicate a ballot protection.
Yeah, well...
On the fence, a couple, and the one on front of that.
That's a wood post, right?
This is a wood post, but we can provide a concrete protection, a ballot.
Yeah, the only concern I have is, you know, late at night, you don't see it. It's a nine-foot six-inch driveway, right? Your side mirror is gonna hit it, or the front of the car is gonna hit it and the roof come down on you.
I have to appreciate that, or at least my concern, if someone hit the post, it will be my problem.
Well, it's a design issue, that's why we're here. Right? So, you know, it, normally I see something like this would be like a 10-foot driveway, right? This one is nine foot six inches, is a little shy, right? I just want to make sure you get all the consideration there.
So another thing is we can replace this post with a three-foot concrete base to put protection.
Okay.
Somehow, I will address that safety issue, because definitely will be an issue.
Fair enough. Soft enough, thank you.
Just a question, well, I don't know how quick, but the, I don't see anything about landscaping, so is there any... What, what's going to be happening, is the front staying about the same and what's happening with the back?
So we haven't really come up any landscape design. That's part of the requirement we should have that take into consideration. And more important is when we get landscape, the water usage is part of the landscape design.
Right. So you haven't talked about it at all, discussed it at all?
If I may? So the front yard setback section to the left of the existing concrete driveway currently, what is it? Is it just cement concrete?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, okay, so it's actually landscaped right now with a lawn?
Yeah, the front yard has landscaped, but the backyard, after the construction, there was no landscape plan to rest the remaining open space.
Okay. Well, a landscaping plan for something like this would be very nice. Part of our concern is that look and feel of the building after this major addition. It would go a long way for you to provide a landscaping plan that meets the requirement of the planning staff, so that, you know, when you build this big addition in the rear, that this whole thing looks nice and clean.
I would agree with that, because given that there was very few neighborhood responses that, you know, in order for this to, I guess, blend in and be acceptable for the neighbors and make just concessions for the neighbors and just recognize any concerns that they may have, you know, just having some landscaping in the back or if there's some type of buffer. I'm not sure what the distance is between the rear property's house building is and, and the new property. If it's very close, or if there's privacy concerns.
Site plan, there's some outline of the building.
Right, but it doesn't show windows or distances and so forth. So just being considerate for the neighboring properties. You know, we're always concerned, obviously, with the privacy issues and making sure that the windows don't line up and that there's, you know, that there's some privacy and also for the, the, what is it, the northern property also, right?
I, I agree with that, because when we take a project as an architect, we hate to circle because we really don't know plans. We will have a professional landscape architect involved to really come up something. Even though it's simple, but at least get it right, so that he or she can perceive what's in the future, how fast the tree can grow. And we can present that in the working drawing or addendum to the condition.
Yeah, following that vein of thought, also for the east elevation, we're looking at the east elevation here. The architecture looks varied and interesting. You know, mixture of gables and roof lines and windows for the east side. And, you know, obviously that's the, the side that people are going to probably walk along the most to get to the garage or go into the house. But on the west elevation, it's pretty plain. There's just a really flat-sided house for the existing and for the new building. Is there any consideration or thoughts for a little bit more architectural features to break that up or add some more interesting elements if, for the existing neighbor or for future neighbors that it might have more interesting view rather than just a big giant flat wall?
So I agree with you. It's only five-foot setback, and, and the space is very valuable. So we want to recess, and then we cannot really push out. We can probably push out a bay window on the second floor. Will not affect the, the passage on the first ground level. That will make some changes, the bay window, just one foot pop out with the roof, that would give some architecture element.
Is there any more questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you for now. I have one speaker slip, Carlos Nosoli.
Get my notes here. Okay, good evening, commissioners and staff. Thank you so much for your time and for the opportunity to speak. My name's actually Charles Nosoli. Sorry for the chicken scratch. No, that's my bad. Yeah, I'm always impressed y'all can like read all that handwriting, but it's Charles Nosoli. Kim Nosoli is my mom, who is the property owner of the 139 Magnolia. She is currently taking care of some medical stuff, and she's ill. So I'm gonna do my best to speak on her behalf, document some of her concerns. So just to make things clear, like regarding this project, Kim is very supportive of fact that Mr. Zhou is trying to improve like his situation for his family. So we're just trying to find a practical solution to meet halfway, so all stakeholders involved can benefit from this. So in the spirit of good neighbors, like I wanted to highlight like the major part of our house that, that's gonna be affected from some of this construction. So her garden is adjacent to where a lot of the heavy construction is gonna be. So this garden to her has a very, very special niche. She has numerous illnesses and like chronic conditions. And some of the medical plans that we've come up with, with the doctors, the, the garden is actually a crucial part of it because it's therapeutic for her. It's a way for her to meditate, and more importantly, given her limited mobility, it's a way for her to stay healthy and active. Having said that, Mr. Zhou and his family has actually benefited from her curating her garden. She always shares her fruits and vegetables, you know, even knowing that there's no reciprocation. This is a very like communal value that she has, so just like, that's kind of like the backdrop. So having highlighted the importance of this garden to her, and I'm gonna start listing some of the concerns that she has. And, yeah, please forgive me if I list something that was part of the PDF application. Like I reviewed through it, but it's almost like rocket science to me, so I see why you have a staff going through that stuff. So if I've mentioned something that's already covered, please just refer, refer me to it, and I'll, you know, reconcile the gaps. So some of the concerns, issues that she'd like to resolve is like having a proper land survey conducted. So she knows where the property lines are and to take care of the fence. At its current state, I don't know if anyone requested you to visit the site. I know I didn't send an email, so I don't know why you would go visit, but the fence itself is dilapidated and it needs renewal. I mean, there's like sections of it's broken down, and it's like, it just needs to be fixed up. And given that, like this construction is gonna take place next to her garden, having this taken care of is really important to her, because it'll act as a buffer. When I was reviewing the application, I couldn't find the solar study, solar access study. Yeah, so I'm sorry if that was provided in there, but I think it would be helpful to know like the sunlight and shade durations.
Sorry, we usually go to three minutes, but do you have just a little bit more?
Oh, okay, three lines. Thank you so much.
That's okay. We don't have 10 slips this time, so you can go a teeny bit over.
Ah, okay, understood. Okay, so some of the diagrams, the references, these diagrams don't have, for a layman, it would be really helpful to have like a reference point to like the neighbors. Like so, you know, the relativity and comparisons are easy to just like, without, you know, having expertise to be able to like dive into these diagrams. And then the last two things I just want to highlight, that we'd like to see, Kim would definitely like to see like maybe a, a list of methods or actions, some kind of proactivity that would minimize like the disruptions from the construction, like issues like parking from the potential workers, maybe like the potential cigarette smoking from the workers, the dust from the excavations, noise pollution, and, you know, like the trash that comes with it. Having a, some kind of document or like a report on light pollution would be helpful because everything is facing, you know, her garden and her bedroom. And then just generally, like... And then, just generally, like a good faith effort on like communicating and responding to issues as they arise. Like, we want this to be practical, we want them to benefit, obviously, but like I don't think the communication has been as strong and there's like a lack of dialogue. And I know there's some language barriers and I only visit Kim periodically, but I left my number with the slip, so you're welcome to contact me anytime. Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else? No other speaker slips? Okay, public comments closed. Do, does the applicant have any response to that? Anything, question or concerns you heard?
Just one thing about--
Microphone, please.
Just one thing about the solar, since Millbury does not require that solar study, so I don't have that physical diagram showing exactly how the shadow will cast. But you look at the direction, actually, they are on the west side, I mean, the east side, so that really, only the afternoon sun after 2:00, 3:00 PM will cast shadow to their yard. And plus, we have the additional driveway and the higher portion of the building with the additional parking space in front of the garage, really, the solar shouldn't be a problem. That's all I wanna say.
Okay, thank you. Questions or discussion?
I'm sorry, if, there were a couple other questions that they did bring up, so I thought-- About the, I mean, there is a, just to answer the comment, there is a survey that was submitted, a site survey. There was a, something about a, the fence neighboring, so is that something that maybe you can work with the neighbor? I'm, it's this side neighbor, right? The left side when you're facing? So, I think that would be good, or have you addressed that?
Usually, the fence is, both party need to agree on the survey results. So, usually, people think that way when survey results come out, it's not what they expect. There are some arguments. So, either they agree in front or have their own surveyor done two separate survey. Otherwise, always be an argument.
Right. I think, I don't think that was the argument. I think they just, because there's so much material going on, so I think it would be helpful to communicate with them and maybe share the survey, because it is, it was in our packets, but it's big.
Survey is difficult to reflect on the site. So, we can ask the surveyor to go back to actually pull the strain from the two property line to show exactly where the survey is. Otherwise, there's no way to communicate based on the drawing and the reality.
Okay, so I guess I should just ask a question. So, have you had communications with the neighbor next door about--
Owner has that issue for years about where exactly the fence is. Both sides have their thinking where the fence supposed to be. I don't want to be involved in this decision, so all I can do from professional ends, since we have a project coming up, we have a licensed surveyor to do the survey, once we actually start the construction, we lay out the staking and then know where is the fence. Maybe that will be the real argument or is a real agreement. But before getting to that point, I don't know what the discussion that we can have.
Are there plans to replace the fence?
Yes. So, we need to get both party agree. Once we lay out the stake, indicate where the property line is, the both side need to accept the results and put a new fence. My client is willing to bear the fence cost but put in the right location.
One question for the applicant, if I may. Did, you said you had a surveyor come out and I see there on C1, Mr. David Alvarez Senior was your surveyor. Did they stick the ground and did they, or did they pin the ground?
They did, but there's no obvious sign above ground, so other people can see. They just have a mark on the ground.
So, my question is, did they, did they not pin the ground when they surveyed it?
When you say, I don't quite understand when you say pin the ground means.
They usually put a pin on the ground?
They usually put--
There's usually a surveyor marker?
Right.
Once they pin the full corner--
Right.
--of the property?
Have to do that.
Have to do that, or so it's not done?
Oh, it's done. Otherwise, those things will not come out. It's done.
Not necessarily. I have surveyor survey my property all the time and they don't necessarily pin the full corner until I tell them to.
Okay, so let me verify that. I don't know.
Okay. Because if they had done that, you know, by a licensed surveyor, that would end the argument, if any, right?
Well, it's maybe the beginning of the argument.
So, anyhow, so, but the second question I have is, I think some of the things that the neighbor have said, what's more regarding the communication or the lack thereof? And so, you know, being, the neighbor is an elderly woman and, you know, there is health issues associated with it and this construction pending, coming up, the dust, the noise and the pollution could be a health and safety issue for the neighbor next door. You know, I think, just out of being a good neighbor, I like to see some sort of a plan or at least communication with the neighbor to figure out what they need, what the issues would be, and come up with a solution to it so that everybody moves on with a good neighbor. I mean, one way or another, if you need to build this house, you need to build this house, but you need to build it in such a way that is respectful to your neighbor, particularly when your neighbor is an elderly woman who might have, you know, health and safety issue with regards to the construction dust and noise.
So, as architects, I can document this requirement on the construction drawings and also communicate with my client periodically, make sure they make the time, maybe monthly, bi-weekly contact, get a response. If they don't get response, that's one thing. If they don't try, that's a different thing. So, at least they can re, because if they go to the neighbors every day, there's no answer, nobody's home, even though they are home, they're not home, that's something I, I don't wanna say it won't be happening. But I will ask my client to do the best they can to get periodically visit to get the feedback. And on top of that, we will have a construction measure during the construction, how to protect the site, how to keep it clean, how to keep the dust within the parameter. That's a basic construction standard. Doesn't matter if it's elderly or younger or whatever, it's a vacant lot. We have to do the right way. So, we will do the right way, not, not because it's elderly, we do the right way. So, I'll communicate with my client, make sure you do the right way. But since it's elderly, then we have the feedback from the neighbor. By doing this, do you have anything periodically, let's say, every two weeks at the construction foundation stage, at the framing stage, make sure you stop at the certain time, 6:00 PM, no more work after that. So, completely follow that, but with the feedback of the neighbors, see their opinions, not just the left, maybe surrounding neighbors, you have any comments, so we can do monthly feedback report, then report to the city.
I have one question for staff. Do we in general upon projects such as this have a pollution control? I know we have waste management plans as part of the permit application. Do we have pollution control, dust control, that sort of thing as part of the application process?
Yes, it's part of the building code and review, building and safety code requirements. It includes dust control and construction staging requirements and, you know, maintaining the site, a safe and clean site at the project site. And there's also hours of construction which are limited from Monday to Friday, 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM. Saturdays, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, with Sunday and holidays from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So, it's condition, and also condition six. The special condition F discusses the hours of the construction.
Right, I just wanna make sure it's on the record that the--
And those are, yes, those are conditions of approval.
Yeah, just wanna make sure that, you know, these dust and pollution control is particularly reviewed by the planning staff upon approval prior to building permit issuance--
Yes.
Given the situation of the neighbor.
Yes.
Let me add one more condition, so we can ask the applicant or us to put up the fence first before the construction, put up the new fence with a two-foot lattice on top, even though I'm not sure the fence coat allow how high it goes, but we can put a six-foot fence, new fence, then put a two-foot lattice on top during the construction period. If it's too high per fence coat, then we can remove after the construction, but at least we have eight-foot protection surrounding it. So, that's for the dust, for the noise, it's quite a help. We can put some plastic on the lattice, really kind of an air barrier during the construction period.
During the construction period, would you have scaffold up?
Not scaffold, just--
No, I'm-- My, my question to you is, while you were doing the construction, would you, would you not have scaffolds up?
That I cannot answer, it's depend on, two-story framing building, usually, they don't use the scaffold. The second floor stucco, yes? Yes.
Scaffold?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I don't wanna put, I mean, it's great, it's, it's, it's good that you're mindful about putting up extra height fence to protect the neighbor, it's, it's good to do that. I'm glad you're mindful about this. Just, I just wanna make sure that the staff upon approval of these building permits, make sure that there's dust and pollution control in place in wake of the comment from the neighbor. That's all I wanted to know, okay?
And if I may, just as a suggestion, you might want to, since the son of the owner is here, get, exchange contact information between the applicant and the son, just so that if they have any concerns, they, they know who to call. And so, I think that would help a lot to do that.
Sure, I, I will do that. Definitely get their official contact information, so if they cannot communicate, I'll be the middleman to make sure it happens, it's past information.
Right. And I do, I mean, we have had other projects in the past where we usually have the fence, we show fencing, if it's gonna be changing, and landscaping, so is this something that we, can we leave it to staff or, because I, I mean, just looking at the front elevation, I think there's some good opportunities you have to really improve the front, right? So, that plus the fence is already dilapidated on one side and then one of the, I think on the right side, is it the right side? Anyway, there's like a big tree or something, bush, right next to the property, so I think the landscaping, it's a great time to, if you're gonna be doing construction, it's a great time to do some improvements. I don't know if we have to have it as part of the project, but we have seen it in the past.
We can make it a condition for approval, to have the landscaping plan.
And then leave it to the staff to evaluate? I mean, I'm, I'm good with that, but I would like to see some, I mean, not that I have to see it, but I, I think that should be incorporated and not just assume that it's gonna happen, so.
Any more for him? Are we good for now? Thank you. Discussion?
Another housing unit is not a bad thing.
I love it.
One step closer to our housing goals? One step.
Well, but adding a second unit in a place where it's zoned to be allowed is a beautiful thing. I think this is a good thing that, yeah, there's, the architect's willing to discuss improvements to address the concerns of the neighbor. There's also the other concerns, like we talked about, landscaping planning they're willing to address, and so, and then we made additional comments to, for the landscaping and also addresses neighboring properties, even though the neighbors are not here, there's no other comments. It's good to provide those additional comments to help improve the neighborhood and address any potential future neighbor concerns, too.
Okay, I'll just make a motion, if that's okay? So, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the application for the design review permit to allow the construction of a two-story second unit in the duplex residential R2 zoning district at 141 Magnolia Avenue, subject to the attached conditions of approval in the staff finding, the findings in the staff report. I would like to add special condition G, I believe it is, for landscaping and fence, neighboring fence design, I'm not sure how to word this, but designed to be submitted and approved by planning staff, something like that. Is that sufficient?
If I may add to that motion, to make sure that we also have a dust and pollution control plan in place for the construction as part of the condition of approval, approvable by staff level at a director's discretion. With that in mind, I will second that.
One, one thing, the applicant did offer to put the fence up first thing, is do we wanna just, he's gonna do it and just thank you for your promise, or do we want to write that down? Just do it, okay?
Yeah, we, or we can add a condition as well.
Either way. He offered it up. I just, you know, he's nice enough to offer it, might wanna write it down.
That would, yeah, that would probably fall into the dust and pollution control as part of that new fence, so.
Well, the fence is gonna be the new fence, he's just gonna put it up first and it, and its purpose will be to help with keeping the dust down.
But it will stay there.
But he's gonna do it first rather than later.
But it's gonna stay there unless it's over six feet.
Right, he's gonna build his tiles, they'll let him until they tell him to shorten it.
Fine.
Right, to keep the dust out. Got it. And then also condition for the verify the property line with the adjacent property. Already, sorry--
Body survey.
And then also, the architect agreed to add some architectural elements, for example, bay window to the west side of the building to break up the massing of the property.
I don't think we discussed that in a, I think it's fine, the east elevation, I think. Personally, I didn't see there was a need for that.
I agree.
Which part, Commissioner Wal, would like to?
East elevation, I think he was--
When we raised that, during the architect's presentation, he agreed to add some architectural elements to the west portion of the building. I, I think he, he said it was a possibility. I don't think he agreed to do it. We didn't talk about it. Do we need it?
I don't, I personally don't think it's necessary.
Don't think so either. Go ahead.
Please come up to the mic. Make sure we capture your promises.
Instead of doing bay windows, I can do a little more window treatment, put the shutter on the side to give more interesting looking of the site, give a little more thought or a little heavier frame. Instead of physically pop out the bay window, decorate the windows was better than this looking.
Okay, great. And we can add that condition?
Oh, one thing I almost forgot. There is something about, we talked a little earlier about the safety in front of front porch area on a nine-foot-six driveway.
Concrete filled protection balance.
Yeah, something of a, to make sure that the structural integrity in case of a traffic accident driving through. You can address that as part of your structural analysis and design. Yes. Okay.
Okay, with all that. How about a vote? Passes four zero, ten-day right of appeal. Congratulations. All right, moving on to new business. We don't have any? Staff updates.
Yeah, so we have a couple updates. I have one or two that I'm gonna blend with my, with a staff announcement as well, and then I think Tom has a comment as well. First, I'd just like to introduce to the commission Bernadette Coons. So, she is the community development department's new administrative assistant, and so she's gonna be staffing the planning commission and working the department. She'll be helping us with the minutes and keeping us on track and making sure that we get our packets out on time, and we're gonna start looking towards a schedule that starts to back out and gives you a little bit more time to review staff reports earlier than when you're, you have been getting them. So, that's what, that's our goal and we'll try to get that done in the next couple of cycles. I did wanna note that on February 4th, at the next planning commission hearing, we will have the work program returned for that hearing, just wanna let you know. And then also for February 18th, which is President's Day, we had a planning commission meeting that would fall on that day. I think what we're probably gonna end up doing is canceling the second meeting in February as it stands now. We're not have any items that are ready for that second hearing, so we will meet on the 4th and then we'll return again in March. And with that, I think Tom has an announcement as well.
Your phone to work, there we go. My announcement is just related to the planning commission training that's gonna be upcoming on January 31st. I would like to thank the planning commission. It's my understanding that the four of you here have all signed up already, and I know that Catherine said she's gonna go, and so it sounds like we'll have five out of five commissioners be there, so a great representation from Millbury. I wanna thank you for that.
Just a note on that, is that who's sponsoring that? It's not some type of sales advertisement?
No, it's actually, it's an organization, actually. They're called Twenty-One Elements, they work throughout the county. It's basically, it's a conglomeration of all the cities of the county. They started-- They started working on housing elements together about eight years ago, about nine years back. So they call it 21 Elements, as in 21 housing elements. But so it's sort of a countywide forum that works on different planning or countywide issues, kind of better the cities and help them kind of come together to save costs.
Commission comments?
I had a question from the staff. I know that the city council has been reviewing TOD 1 and 2 this week. Do we have any idea when we think those are going to be coming down the pipeline back to us? I know there's a lot of work, but.
Right, right. So at this, at this point in time, so the first project, Sarah Station, TOD 1, went to study session last night and that has not completed its study session. So they will be going back to council to finalize that. For the gateway at Millbrae Station, TOD 2, that has made it through its study session. Next week, the idea is that staff is going to be getting back with the applicant to put together both planning commission and city council's comments to see how they're going to respond on those plans. And then we need to take a look at that and then we'll be working on scheduling a hearing. So they'll be coming back for their formal design review permit to planning commission and then also off to council. So we'll be looking for that, probably that first meeting in March is what I'm expecting, for at least the TOD 2, yeah.
And it's my understanding that TOD 2, still a couple of items pending, such as the purchase of the land owned by the city near the bar station, as well as the signing of the developer agreement. Has those two occurred?
I believe the DA has been signed, yes. So I can, I'll have to verify all that. But as it relates to the design review permit, there are some stipulations in the development agreement that they need to be met until such time as their formal hearings can occur. So I'll double check on all of them, yeah.
Right, and as I understand, that they're seeking a piece of property that's owned by the city that needs to be a part of their development. Is there a status on that negotiation?
Yeah, there, yeah, I think that has been, that negotiation has occurred with council, yeah.
Has occurred or has it been completed?
No, I believe it's been completed, but I'll have to double, I'll have to verify, yeah.
And one more thing about the wireless ordinance. Do we have any, make any headway on that?
We have. And so also next week, we have a very preliminary draft that we are going to be sending off to the city attorney's office for review. And then they're also, we're able to give us some information on pursuing master license agreement throughout the city so that if we have providers come again and want to share city infrastructure, we'd have the ability to enter into lease agreements. But we're going to continue exploring the stealth, the light pole system that we talked about in the last hearing. So we're going to continue working on it. And to any extent that we're able to put that type of design guideline into our ordinance, that's what we're going to be pushing for. So hopefully, as we had, as I indicated before, we're still hoping to be before planning commission. You know, hopefully in springtime, we're going to need to do some community outreach on the new ordinance. But we're hoping to come before you, springtime with a draft ordinance.
Yeah, I think that needs to be, if everybody agrees, that should really be a priority, given how many of these wireless application coming forth before the city as a whole and how we have been hearing the residents' concern, especially after the first approval on that open space, Santa Barbara antenna. So if we can put that as a priority, I think I would be more happy to see that.
Yeah, and then when we bring back the work program, maybe that's something that we do want to put on there and prioritize as well. I mean, it's already occurring, but it doesn't hurt to have it listed as well.
Thank you.
Also, any updates on the general plan? I guess one concern I have, too, is that if there's a lot of these larger projects going on and with the general plan and the timing of that coming out, will we be able to incorporate the elements from that general plan? Or is it coming out too late and we will miss opportunity to have the general plan influence or have recommendations for these larger projects?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a great question. And, you know, certainly it's something that we've been giving some thought because as we move down the line, especially here in 2019, you know, there's the mindset that we're trying to get the general plan and the specific plan, along with the active transportation plan and also the climate action plan. These four separate policy documents, all try to wrap them up here, hopefully by fall of this year. And so we will have to think about doing some planning commission management of the agendas. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of materials to take a look at. So we may have to either look to add some special meetings and/or have one meeting devoted to more policy type of applications and band together some of the current planning applications. And so we're taking a look at some of that. But yeah, I do think that, to your question, Commissioner, I do think that as applications are coming in, and especially if they're along El Camino Real in the area where the, where the specific plan is occurring, we are trying to inform those applicants that, one, you know, you would get the benefit if you're able to wait, that when those projects are done, then you'd have the benefit of what the specific plan policies and zoning would allow, as well as the benefit of the environmental impact reports that would be done. There are projects that are trying to move forward now. So they're trying to be processed concurrently along with the specific planning that's going on. And they have that ability to do that. And so they either have to propose new zoning or they'll have to wait until the adoption of the plan. So, but the reality is that any concepts are coming out of the specific plan. We're informing those applicants, so it informs their projects. And anything that we're seeing that's really good out of that is kind of informs the plan as well. So it's a roundabout way of answering your question. But yes, we do think that there's room to have the new concepts and form the new plans that are coming, coming through.
Yeah, there's so many, you know, modernization type of things like energy efficiency and electric car stations and so forth, that if we don't have those out with the general plan, then we might have missed our opportunity to get them included in the TOD projects or have them addressed or incorporated. I guess that's, that's a concern. I think one other item that some people have been mentioning is that, you know, unique about our city is that, you know, we're the transportation hub with the bar station and Caltrains and airport and so forth. It would be great to have welcoming signs in multi languages, Spanish, Venidos and Chinese or Spanish and then, you know, wayfaring signs and so forth. Might consider that, that would be unique and set us apart from the peninsula that, you know, we're the welcoming city. We're the intermodal city that's welcoming all nations here to our city. It's something to consider or think about along with these other modernization type items in our general plan.
Any comments?
I just wanted to put in, I was going to mention cell site, but you took that from me, so the ordinance. But I did, in addition to that, I, I think we really do need to do it because the new FCC ordinance that took effect last week is going to tie the hands of the cities even more. So I know there are some cities that are actually doing like urgency ordinances just to get something in there because part of it is you have to be, have something written and published in advance. So, you know, we're kind of racing against the clock. But having said that, I did want to just express my appreciation for the staff because you, I know you've been, like Brad's been at every meeting this week, Tuesday, Wednesday and today. So, and all of you have been working really hard. So I just wanted to kind of make sure that that's clear, you know, that, yeah, Sam and Tom, everybody, he's been working really hard, so. But really wanted to make sure, make that clear.
I was going to thank them too, but you took that away from me.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff.
Any announcements? No? I'll plug the MEF Gala one more time, March 2nd. Get your tickets now. Going to be a festive event and support our schools.
I'm sorry, there's the Mills High School.
Oh, 60th.
60th anniversary.
You're right.
So just, just as a reminder.
It's another thing.
Saturday.
Find it. Support it. If you went to Mills and you've got pictures, they're looking for stuff. They're looking for memories, so connect. Anybody else?
Also for the Asian Festival coming up in March, we need to find sponsors and create participation. It'd be great to find more people participating in that.
That's also March 2nd, I think, right?
Ready, set, adjourn.